Okay, welcome everybody to the, believe it or not, fourth annual Mineral Point School Board Candidate Forum. My name, if you don't know me, I'm Joelle Doi. I'm Communications Director for the school district. I received a lot of submitted questions, so we'll get to those. But if you have one that you'd like to write down, Angie Schubert's over there, and she's got note cards, and you're welcome to do so. Thank you to our candidates. First of all, I'll say that Tony Doll emailed me and Mitch, and he is sick with the flu, apparently, today. So, I know there's a lot of that going. So, best wishes to Tony on his illness. But thank you to our candidates, Andy Bush and Larry Steffes, because without them, we wouldn't be here today. We all know that as school board members, it's a difficult job, so thank them for their dedication for running for the board. This is the order the names will appear on the ballot, so you will have Tony Doll first, Andrew M. Bush, and Larry Steffes. The election is April 2nd. The instructions will say to vote for not more than three, so you don't need to vote for all three, but you can't vote for more than three. The top two vote recipients will be elected to the school board for a three-year term. The third-place vote recipient will receive a one-year term. As the moderator tonight, my main goal is to keep the evening moving along. Each candidate will have the same amount of time to answer each question, which is a maximum of 90 seconds. They don't need to use all that if they don't want to. I'll set my phone, so you'll hear it when it goes off if you go over. And we'll alternate who answers which question first. In years past, this event lasts about an hour, so that's kind of what we're shooting for tonight. I tried to group questions that were submitted around common themes, so we received several that were very similar. So, that's hopefully the plan tonight. But that also means that not everybody probably will have their individual question answered specifically. But if you'd like to hang around after, I'm sure the candidates would love to chat with you about anything that didn't get covered. We don't have a microphone today, but I don't think we really need it. We are videoing this, so anybody that's not here should, hoping technology works okay, be able to watch it. All right, here we go. So, the first question is the introductory question. Please tell us a little bit about yourself, including what motivated you to run for the school board again. Mr. Bush?
Hi, my name's Andy Bush. I am a, obviously, a resident of Mineral Point. I've been a resident my whole life. Was lucky enough to go to school here, and lucky enough to realize at a young age what a special place this is, and how great the people are, how great the staff is. And got involved with the school through coaching at a young age. And was approached by an outgoing board member three years ago to see if I would be interested, understood the importance of this position, saw it as an opportunity to give back to the staff that gave to me, and make sure that the students get the same experience or better than I had. That was why I ran three years ago. That's why I'm running again.
Great. Mr. Steffes?
So, hi. I'm Larry Steffes. I've been a resident of Mineral Point my entire life. Of course, attended school here through all 13 grades. Been married 21 years. My wife Tabitha is here. We have five wonderful kids. Our oldest attends UW-Madison. Pursuing a biology degree at this moment. The next is a junior in high school. I have a freshman, a sixth grader. And my youngest is in the four-year program. Special day for my youngest, today is her fifth birthday. So, proud that she's with me tonight. What motivated me to run for school board again? This is my, I'm just finishing my third term. And the reasons are many, just to maintain good quality education. And like Andy said, this is a very, very special place, and I'm proud to be part of it. And I want to preserve that for, not only my kids, but every kid that attends this school. Thank you.
The second question. Some of you have been on the board longer than others, but regardless, what do you consider your biggest accomplishment as a board member to date? Mr. Steffes?
Oh, biggest accomplishment? There, I mean, we've done some great things in the past nine years on our board. And probably the easiest one to talk about is the report card score from where we started nine years ago to where we've, we became today. Ranked number two, number two in the state. I think that's a huge accomplishment. And I will take very little credit for that. And I see some of our staff are here, and I think the credit has to go to them and our administrators.
Okay. Mr. Bush?
I think maybe our best accomplishment as a team is a year ago, we were faced with a $350,000 deficit to start the year. And as a team, we worked together to figure out ways to bring that budget back to even while still rewarding the staff. We've done a great job. We've, I would say, second to that is being able to reward the staff the last three years for their great work. After they had gone through a pay freeze for a few years, to be able to work into the budget and reward the staff that is a large part in where we stand academically. So, I would say working through that budget process a year ago to get to a place where we didn't have to harm the students and rewarding the staff.
Mr. Bush, again. Why did you decide to vote the way you did regarding placing a second elementary referendum on the ballot for April? And you may want to explain which way you did vote.
Okay, I voted no. My vote was strictly based on the fact that I didn't see the second vote as an apples-to-apples vote with the first vote. In the first vote, you had the opportunity to vote no because you didn't want any project. In the second vote, you don't really have that opportunity. I feel like the first vote is being used to create a choice in the second vote. You either want the renovation, or you want a new school. Those are your two choices. And the no-action vote has really been taken away because of the first vote. So, I didn't see it apples-to-apples. I thought there was a group out there who no longer had the ability to vote how they really wanted to, so I voted no against it.
Mr. Steffes?
So, early on in that whole program, when the board was discussing the different options of the current elementary, I did not support the $11.9 million price paid that was proposed to us. I think there was four or five different votes throughout the course of last summer to do that. Moving forward, after the referendum, there was multiple community members that approached me and asked me why there wasn't another option on the ballot to build a new school. So, I thought it was worth pursuing, and that's why I supported going back to referendum. And there will be more reasons, I'm sure, later on in this meeting. I'll get into them. Thank you.
Mr. Steffes, in your role as a school board member, have you spoken to other city leaders, such as the mayor, city council members, realtors, business leaders, or others, about how a new school, while abandoning the old school, would fit into a vision of what our community should look like over the next 50 years?
Well, certainly, there's many opportunities for the existing elementary school. In Monday night's school board meeting, we went through quite a list of the different options and the potential options for it. I think, I think if a new school were to be built at this site, there would be, the, oh, the repurpose of the existing elementary school would enhance the economic vitality of our community. Thank you. I have no sense of control. I apologize.
Mr. Bush?
I have not had those discussions specifically. I've had discussions with council members and Mayor Bassing about the need for housing of some sort, affordable housing, to allow more families to move into the district to help our enrollment, but not specifically about the topic of how the school would affect their plan. Much the same, I don't think the city council will ask us about whether or not we support a new city hall or a new cop shed.
Mr. Bush, how do you feel the board can best support our new superintendent and work together to move the district forward?
I think, first of all, we have to have a great relationship, and I think that currently exists. The better the working relationship, the more help we're going to be. The nice part about our current board is there's a lot of individual attributes in each person that are different. So, there are a lot of strengths that we're able to pass on to match Mitch's strengths. And recently, we've just had some discussion about that. So, and how important it will be for our board to provide some leadership to Mitch instead of Mitch being the one to advise us how to be a better board. So, I think using all of our individual attributes, whether it's finance, or building, or people, or personnel of different committees we're on, doing that, and just giving him the opportunity to develop professionally like he needs, as any first-year superintendent would.
Mr. Steffes?
Mitch, being a first-time superintendent, Andy said it well with professional development. I think there's many opportunities out there to ensure that. And I think it is up to the board to monitor the success of our school and not to, not to see a decrease in our performance. And if there is, we will address it and give Mitch the help that he needs, like Andy said.
Thank you. Mr. Steffes, according to some city officials, there are over $100 million in needs at the city and county level in the next few years. What seems like the more responsible decision to you? The $11.92 million remodel, or the $19.5 million new school? And why do you feel that way?
It seems like there, throughout the county, I know the county is talking about a new incarceration center. I've heard with a price tag of $30 million. The city garage slash infrastructure, $3 million. And the two different referendums for the school. Again, we can get into this, I'll get into this on this question. I believe that spending the extra $7.5 million, up to $7.5 million, will be a small price to pay to ensure the long-term success of our school. So, we will not face additional referendums going into either expansion, renovation of the elementary school, or the possible relocation of the school 10, 20 years down the road. I think if this generation wants to tackle that, it does come with a bit of a price tag, but then it will be done.
Mr. Bush?
I think a couple of things here. I think it's important to look at needs in the community as a whole, but we are tasked specifically with the needs of this district. And a year ago, when we did the initial study, the needs list, which remains, was pretty big. So, we put out a first referendum. I think the most responsible thing for us to do, because the question, the question on April 2nd is really a $93 question. It's not per $100,000. It's not about how high the mill rate is, how high. Because the mill rate's going to be high either way, okay? Taxes are going to be high whether it passes or not, okay? And that's not always being disclosed. I think the most responsible thing for us to do is whether it's the remodel or the new school, is to make sure you get every dollar you pay for it. Whether, either one, our responsibility comes in once the choice is made by the public. It's a public's responsibility to choose, and then it becomes our job to make sure it's the best project for the public's choice.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, our country is facing a huge shortage of skilled workers in the areas of construction, automotive, and infrastructure-related fields, to name a few. What do you think our district should do to prepare for the future job market, and how will your ideas be funded?
I think, and it's something we've discussed a little bit, I think we need to get back to working with local vendors, local skilled trades, set up partnerships, get the apprenticeship program bigger, make it bigger. There's a program through CISA that actually offers us some money for every student we have involved. Belmont, I think, makes six figures from CISA in payback. So, I think that's a funding source. I don't know that with the funding situation the way it is, we have a great opportunity to build an auto shop or an auto body, okay? But I think there's a few in the area that we could certainly engage with and develop partnerships with, and give our students opportunities there. So, I think that is probably the most cost-effective way. It also gets our students involved in the community. It gets the community back involved in the school. It sounds like a great partnership to me, and it sounds cost-effective. So, I think that's the route to look at for the skilled trades.
Mr. Steffes?
Well, when you look at two examples, a welder or a mechanic, and you see with a two-year degree and what their starting wages are, it's unbelievable. And through our very own tech ed programs, aid classes, it has to start with them instructors to let these kids know that there is very, very lucrative career options out there without pursuing a four-year degree. And like Andy said, use the resources that are available to us through CISA mentorship programs, apprenticeship programs, job shadowing. For example, the local Peterbilt dealership here in Mineral Point, I think it would be a great, great source of partnership to have some kids job shadow mechanics there to show them what it's all about.
Thank you. Mr. Steffes, it doesn't seem like anyone has a good understanding of what the problem actually is with the foundation at the current elementary school. Why hasn't the school board hired a civil engineer firm to get under the building and find out what the problem is and how much it will cost to fix it?
Yeah, that's a good point. Our previous architect, I think, dropped the ball. That is a part of what they were assigned to do, I believe. And there should have been an investigation done on that foundation and the structural integrity of that building before we asked the voters for the $11.9 million. And of course, we all know we're not using that architectural firm anymore. We've got a different one. And they have not done any subgrade inspections, but above-grade inspections, and there is some concern.
Mr. Bush?
I can't, I can't put it completely on the prior architect, simply because they did suggest at a meeting, and I can't currently recall why it got dismissed, if it was because the referendum was upcoming and we didn't want to spend money on tearing the floor up to find out the issue if we weren't going to do anything with the building. But there was an agenda item on a meeting about what they would charge us to go in, dig up a couple of the bad floors, and figure out what's going on. And as a board, we decided to take their best guess, I think, of what was happening, and wait for the election results to determine if we were going to need to find that issue or not. And then we've moved on from them and got a second explanation. So, I think it's still, it's still a valid question, what's actually happening there. I think it's a situation where if you ask five architects and engineers, you might get five different answers with five different solutions.
Thank you. Was that yours, Larry? That was your question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bush? I grew up in Mineral Point. I didn't, the person who submitted this. I grew up in Mineral Point and attended school when all the schools were close to each other. I remember seeing at a young age, high schoolers smoking, making out, driving erratically. In high school in the '90s, I smoked and drank and drove erratically. Not me, again. Many of my high school friends had hunting rifles in their cars. What has changed now that putting our elementary school kids with the high school kids in a sometimes unsupervised environment is a good idea?
Well, I can't, I can't sit here and claim that students drive any better than they did 20 years ago. I also attended elementary, middle, high school when they were all invisible of each other. I don't recall seeing a lot of smoking. Maybe it's because I wasn't out smoking with them. I don't know. I also am around this school quite a bit, and don't run into kids smoking outside. I think we do a pretty good job of monitoring. The parking situation at the old high school was different than it is here. It was an open campus at lunch, so kids were able to walk across the street to QuickTrip where they were not on school grounds. So, I would say that has probably changed quite a bit as far as students smoking in the parking lot. They probably still don't drive well. Other than that, I can't, I can't speak for certain.
Okay. Mr. Steffes?
Well, first, Mitch, if you see anybody smoking in our parking lots, that's unacceptable. It needs to stop. I don't, I don't have a problem with bringing the elementary school up here. And the debate of having kids near or even combined with high school kids, really, you need to then question all the kind of kids that we have. I have, I have two high schoolers right now, and it's kind of an insult to even my kids. It's like, I would expect my kids to do anything they could to help out an elementary school kid if there was a situation. I think our population in this high school would go above and beyond to help out elementary-age kids. And you're really demeaning our teachers when you say they don't have control of our kids. We've got some of the greatest teachers, I think, a public school system would ever have. And that's a baseless claim.
Thank you. Mr. Steffes, a typical student takes 112 standardized tests between pre-K and the end of 12th grade. Do you support a reduction in the number of standardized tests we give our students? If so, how would you rather see our students spend that time?
I've, I don't have no problem with testing for our students, whether it's standardized testing, exams, end-of-the-year exams, midterms, or whatever. I think it only builds, builds character, and it builds better college-ready students.
Mr. Bush?
I think that the standardized, I think the STAR tests are probably included in that standardized test number. I think the ones that give us immediate results that help the teachers with interventions right away are incredibly helpful. And I think if they were sitting here, they would tell you that. I think since we started those, our literacy numbers have increased. Our average reading level of our younger students has increased. The standard tests that they use to rank schools that we don't get feedback on for months, where, you know, you may not even have that student in that grade level anymore. You know, if they wanted to space those out every other year, so all of our students were taking them every year. Because we do a good enough job of tracking on our own, I wouldn't have an issue with that. But a lot of that stuff comes from the state, the forward exams, the Badger tests, the ACT Aspire, that goes with the report card. So, as long as that's how they are grading us, we really don't, we really don't have a choice. But I am strongly in favor of the testing that gives us immediate feedback to help the teachers with interventions and determine how a student learns, so they're better to help them where they're at.
All right, you have one second. I thought you were going to be the first ding of the night. Mr. Bush, if the April 2nd referendum does not pass, will you dedicate your attention to the remodel earnestly and exhibit a positive and constructive approach to the process?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's April 3rd, we go to work either way. It's the rent remodel, or it's the new school. And there'll be plenty of work to do either way. We're working with a new architect that has new ideas, so we need to get to work and get them on board with our vision, see what changes they want to make. They've had some ideas about different plans. And quite frankly, we need to start as soon as we can so it's more cost-effective, without rushing it. So, the sooner we get to work and the harder we work at it, we will. And I think that, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think that's the attitude of the whole board. Is come April 3rd, whenever the result is, the community has spoken, and we're going to work.
Mr. Steffes?
I would, I would echo some of the same comments from Andy. However, the last thing we want to do is rush the process. We will have to work up a, work up a design that's going to be compatible with the community. And once we do that, then they'll have to integrate that into the, into the plan, into the current building, address the structural integrity of the building. That will probably be first, I guess. And then the timeline will fall in place after that. Whether it'll take two years, three years, or four years to do all that, we will wait, because we do have a small window, of course, of work when it comes to the interior of the existing building.
If you do have questions, you can, Angie can collect them if you want to give them to her. We're still working our way through the list, so there's probably some more themes to come up here yet tonight. Mr. Steffes, on the most recent open enrollment survey, the number-one reason people opened enrollment into Mineral Point was better teachers, and the number-two was better communication. What else do you think the district could or should do to attract additional non-resident students? Or, if you don't support open enrollment, please state why.
I support open enrollment. I know that the state reimbursement is 2/3 of what a full-time student is. But I think it gives families opportunities and choices, whether it's a family in our school that, for some reason, Mineral Point School District isn't fitting the needs or satisfying the needs of the family. It gives a family a choice to open enrollment to a neighbor's school, or whatever the choice is. What we could do different to attract more? Keep doing the same as what we're doing with our achievement levels. And I think, and we've seen it, we've shown it with the increase in open enrollment.
Okay. Mr. Bush?
I think I support open enrollment as well. I think those two reasons go hand-in-hand with why we've had success. I think we do a good job of communicating our successes in the classroom. I think we do a good job of communicating our successes in the classroom, both academic and not academic. We do, we do a good job of communicating and displaying our success in co-curriculars and extracurriculars. And I, I think we could do a little more of it. It's, you go to, you go to Fenimore, you go to Voskavell, you go to some schools, you know, CISA who did not fare as well as we did on, on the report card. And they've got banners in the gym, and they've got banners in the hallway, and they are very excited about their success. And their, their banners don't look like ours, but they're missing some stars. And it's not all about that, but it is to some parents. So I think the more we can communicate all of our successes and continue to do that in multiple forums, the more success we'll have with open enrollment.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, many people recognize that in a democracy, voting is an essential element to the process. Ensuring that people's votes are counted and not disregarded is basic in a democracy. When the school board decided to disregard the referendum that passed in November, how consistent is that with the basic tenants of democracy?
I'm not sure it is, quite frankly, but it's where we're at, so I would encourage everybody to take a second opportunity to vote. I would love to see 2,000 more votes. I would love to see the same voice from the community and get, get a directive from as many or more people. Because that's, that's where we're at at this point. So I, I would say let your vote be heard again.
Mr. Stepas?
Well, when, when you talk about the democratic process, if, if a community, community member thought they were misled on information presented to them before the referendum, and they voted with that information, they had new information after the referendum. I have no problem with it, voting, voting again. There, there is as many people that have reached out to me thanking me for the second opportunity that have questioned the, number one, the authority of it, whether it was legal or not. So the community as a whole didn't think it was a bad idea.
Mr. Stepas, the passing of the $350,000 operational referendum allows the district to maintain educational programming and class sizes, retain staff, backfill budget cuts, and address technology needs. If the new school passes and this recurring amount is not enough to operate, where will we get more money? Would you support another operating referendum, or would you support cutting, cutting teachers and programs?
With the 350,000, there's, there's really no reason that should not carry us through for, for the near term, three to five years. We, we were tight last year, as Andy alluded to in one of the earlier questions. Some money did free up. The, the TIF rebate that we got helped us out last year. Our fund balance is rather healthy, so that is a backup plan that we have. If we, if we needed additional funds, we could borrow from the fund balance. Reducing, reducing programs, staff would be, would be last resort. And, and I don't think, I don't think we'll have to go back to the voters for any operating money for at least three to five years.
Mr. Bush?
Well, let me say first, I don't, I don't think my answer, whether the second referendum passes or not, has any bearing on whether we would go back to the taxpayers. As, as I've stated before, either option is going to leave us above $13 on the mill rate. We will be top five in the state either way, either way. The, the question is a $93 question per 100,000, which is just a little more than the 350,000 is costing the taxpayers. I would have a hard time going back and asking for more, because it means we screwed up the question a year ago. It means that the number should have been higher a year ago. I think we dig into a healthy fund balance if we need to. We get strategic with our cuts. If we need to cut something, I'm not talking about staff or, or classes. We got strategic this year and found a way to eliminate a $350,000 deficit. About 250, we used 100,000 of the fund balance which came from the TIF. So we'd have to do that again. You know, our greatest asset is our teachers, and we'll give them as much as they can. But we have teachers that can do more with less than probably any district around, okay? So I, I think that's where I would start.
Guys, I have a comment. Andy, we'll comment on this together. It seems like at the end of every fiscal cycle, there's always a surplus. That surplus is always put into what we call a Fund 46. And in that Fund 46, currently, we found out Monday, there's a half a million dollars in there that cannot be touched until 2020.
2020.
Summer of 2020. Yeah. And that's, that's a very good program that the state came up with for us. It's surplus dollars that could be put into that, into that fund, gaining interest, and then we get, we get state aid on that money that we put in there. So if we were to take the surplus dollars and go back into our fund balance, there would be no state aid on that. For this Fund 46, we do get aid there.
Okay.
And that's growing every year.
Mr. Bush, this is the third straight year that Mineral Point has earned a five-star report ranking for the district from the Department of Public Instruction. The district's preliminary budget for next year will be discussed soon. Do you believe in giving a pay raise to staff for their work and helping to achieve these academic results while also helping to retain and attract high-quality staff?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Like I alluded to prior, I think the fact we've done that for three years in a row is one of our, our best accomplishments, okay? I think it depends a little bit how much that raise can be on our budget. CPI may come in higher than usual, higher than it's been in the benefits. Cost of benefits may go up, which is a secondary raise since the school pays for those benefits. But absolutely, I think that's where the discussion starts. And I think that's where we've started at the last, at least the last three years, is we determine that, and that kind of starts our budget process, is what are we going to pay the staff? Okay, now how much money is left for, for our other needs?
Mr. Stepas?
In the budget process, Mitch usually does start with the salaries and the potential increases, not only in the salaries, but the benefits also. It, it's kind of a, you, you gotta, you gotta have enough money to, to run the school after, after you, you approve raises. So do I support raises? Have I voted for, for every raise that's come across the table? No, no I have not. I do, I do support raises that fall in line with, with teachers of, of schools our size and, and abilities, certainly. I would support that every day. But to, to, the, the, the school's got to be careful, we just can't, we can't be, we can't be number one in the race category of our, of our staff. And again, I support the staff. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stepas, how will you help us stay on budget for a remodel or a new elementary school when we are capped by the referendum dollar amount while also factoring in inflation?
Well, let's break the two programs apart. On the renovation, that one's going to be a little trickier. As far as inflation, I, I'm not convinced that that's going to be a big deal. We've already been told that to sell the bonds, we should get a lower interest, so that's going to help a little bit. On the remodel, the integrity of the structure of the existing elementary school is going to be key. We simply don't know what that's going to take to shore up that structure, repair it. So to, to stay on budget and, and get all of the, all of the ideas, all the renovations that we basically told, told the community that they were voting on, so that's going to be a little bit tougher. On the new high school, the 19.5, I think that will be, I think that will come in somewhere under 19.5. I think 19.5 was, was an elevated number to, just to make sure that we covered all of our bases on that.
Mr. Bush?
I think that process has actually already started. I think it starts with vetting architects, which the board did, doing research on the projects they've done, making sure that they have done a, a good job of coming in under budget. Making sure when we select a contractor, we select a contractor who has a history of, of being on budget, of not having to take a lot of scope out of the project. Because really, it, it's, it's going to be on budget either way, because we only get that amount to spend. So it's really about how much do we get that we wanted out of our, out of our 11.9 or our 19.5. The project will stay on budget, because we can't spend any more than that. So that's, that's really, the board is going to have to be diligent all the time, working with, with the contractors and the architect. We'll, we'll have preliminary budgets, we'll set preliminary budgets, and just a constant monitoring by the board and by Mitch on a weekly basis of where we're at, to, to make sure that we are following in line with those numbers and getting answers for reasons we're not and holding the appropriate people accountable.
Right. Mr. Bush, the Mineral Point High School report card grade is only four stars, not as highly rated as the elementary and middle school. What, if anything, is the school board doing to improve academics at the high school level?
The board itself has had some conversations about that. We actually had a presentation. It's interesting, part of that, part of the issue in that is that we do not qualify for the closing gaps, part of the report card, which is what helps schools score high. If you take out the schools that don't qualify, take, combine all the schools that don't qualify for closing gaps, we are in the top 15. But obviously, we want to be a five-star school, so we are, we're constantly getting updates from Mitch on the ACT, the pre-ACT program, the ACT boot camp, because really, we're only, we're only graded on the ACT scores that the junior class takes, the graduation rate, which last year we were stung with a foreign exchange student and a student that moved after their freshman year and was counted against us, and we weren't able to, they just, they would not correct it. So our graduation rate was down. And without the closing gap score, you're, you're really left to those two things. So making certain that we are getting all students to graduate, I think the option school will help us with that, because it gives us another alternative when we are having students graduate that may not go through the process of even having options.
There it is.
Somebody had to be the first.
Mr. Stepas?
It has been on the board's radar. And the, the ACT boot camp, we hope, will show better results on that end. And when we hire a high school principal to replace Mitch's last position, that will, that will be emphasized to that, to that person that the, the report card score needs to be raised in that school. Yes, non-negotiable.
Okay, well, I wasn't going to ask this question next, but since you said it, are you in favor of splitting the superintendent and high school principal's duties, or do you wish to continue with one person doing both jobs and why?
I think, I think we have to. There's, there's too much for, for one, one person in the school of our size. If we wanted to combine administrative positions, I would seek more toward middle school principal, high school principal shared, split.
Mr. Bush?
Yeah, I, I concur. I, I think those are two, two positions in this district that need to be separated. The duties of both are just, just too much. But I do, again, I think, I think there can be combinations of duties made. I think he's a 612 principal, and then he, an athletic director slash assistant principal or middle school dean of students, somebody that doesn't necessarily need an administrative degree that we have to pay an administrative price for. Could be beneficial if we're looking to, to catch some cost savings or, or lower the amount we pay administration as a whole, but I, I don't think a combination, not that Mitch has done, I think he's done a wonderful job, but it's a job I would never want to ask anybody to do again.
Mr. Bush, if the governor's budget is favorable to schools, would you consider not levying the $350,000 recurring referendum in order to keep the mill rate more competitive with surrounding schools?
It would have to be a pretty, a pretty nice budget that we would get from, from the governor for, for dollars to flow all the way to the rural schools. If, if that number was significant and we did not need it, yeah, why levy it? But that's, I mean, I guess that's a, there's a certain point where we, we have needs, and then there's some wants that we can have that will better the educational opportunities of our students. And I guess it's where you draw the line between the needs and the wants and what those wants are that might actually improve the educational process for the students. But it's hard to tell without, that line is somewhere. So I guess it's a tough question to answer without knowing how much money the, the possibility or the possible scenario presented brings us. But if we don't need it, obviously, there's no, no reason to levy for it.
Mr. Stepas?
If, if we need to catch up on a program, an example, technology, I could, I would consider lev, levying part of the 350. But if, if the governor passed more money down, down to the rural schools, I'm, I'm with Andy, I would not, there's no need to idea why do it. I would, I would try to protect the mill rate as much as we can.
Mr. Stepas, what are some of the best ideas you've heard for use of the old elementary building should a new referendum succeed, and how would they benefit our community?
Well, as we alluded to earlier, Monday night, Monday night school board meeting, there were ideas presented. Part of the building, a possible daycare facility is one. A condominium, a higher-end condominium, a complex, I think would be a great fit for the neighborhood. A nursing home, assisted living type of facility would be a, would be a, a good fit in the Office, you ran out of office space, if somebody wanted to convert it into office rentals, another, another great fit in, in, in that area. Community center. I mean, the list goes on and on. And certainly, as we talked about Monday night, it has to be a good fit for the neighborhood, a good fit for the kids. a good fit for the community, and bring positive, positive things to Mineral Point.
Mr. Bush?
Well, I presented, not that it's the best idea I've heard, but just to share. I presented, I'd like to look at the feasibility of costs versus what we pay in rent to move the option school that we currently pay rent on to that facility, so we wouldn't pay rent. Obviously, we would likely pay more in heat and internet than we do at the other building. But with the success of that program and the possibility that they become a charter school, I see that program continuing to grow. I see students needing alternative ways to attend school more often every year. And at some point, we're going to run out of room at the other building potentially, and it would be nice to have a place to continue growing. But I don't know if that's feasible. I do like, if we were just getting to pick, what would happen? I do like the idea of a community center, something that involves community spaces. That's something we heard was a want from the community or a need from the community when we did the survey, that the more community space would be nice. There's just not much indoor community space available. And combining that with some sort of after-school option for students who don't have a lot of options after school.
Mr. Bush? Do you support, in addition to attach the agriculture building to the high school for safety and security reasons? Can it be built this year? How would it be funded?
I would absolutely support it. It can't currently be built this year, because it can't be funded. We are currently operating on, like we said, a deficit budget. We got the $350,000, you know, with some holes to fill back, and we're looking at increases in costs, and potentially raises and things like that. I would like to get it done as soon as, as soon as it's affordable, whether it's a class project, whether it's somebody doing it. I do think that's probably our biggest safety concern left, is the area between the buildings. So I would definitely support it. I don't have an answer for funding currently.
Mr. Stepas?
We have looked at that area, oh, I would say for two, three years now, with concerns of students going back and forth between the two buildings. And any safety enhancements back there need to be looked at seriously, and at some point, we'll get it done. So it is on the radar of the school board.
Mr. Stepas? Not including the referendum, what do you consider the biggest challenge that's currently facing the district?
With budget cuts, the unknown funding from our state sources, I would say that is a challenge. How do you budget? How do you present a budget? Plan, hire additional staff if needed. So yeah, budget.
Mr. Bush?
I think the biggest challenge facing the district and the board is staying where we are. You know, we've set the bar pretty high in a lot of areas, and a lot of people will say, once you set the bar, most of the time, there's only one way to go. So we need to make sure we're working diligently, because the community expects it, as a district, to maintain the highest standards that we have for all students. We need to continue to do our best for all students. And that's not just report card, that is co-curriculars, making sure we are inclusive as a district for all students, all the areas that we're exceeding in now. I think it's challenging every year to continue to keep the bar that high.
We are approaching the eight o'clock hour. Does anybody have a question on your note card that a theme hasn't been covered about that tonight? Okay, well, I will ask the candidates then to kind of do a closing statement about why you feel, because there's something at stake here, the three-year term versus the one-year, why you're up for a challenge of another three-year term here on the board. And then, believe Mr. Bush, you go first.
Yeah, either way, three-year term, one-year term, you know, you're getting all three of us again, so it's going to be up to all of us to do our best to work with our current board. I think we've talked about that and its advantage to the board that we're able to discuss some things in longer term, because the same seven people are going to be sitting there. You know, whether it's a three-year term or a one-year term, I'm going to do the best I can. And if you give me an opportunity to make a decision in a year, I may not, I may not be that upset about it. But just looking to serve the community the best I can, whether it's for a year or three years.
Mr. Stepas?
Certainly, it is an honor, an honor to sit here and humbling experience. And I know that all, every three years, or possibly one year, we got to go through this. And like Andy said, more than likely, the three of us for the next year will be on the board. We need to work together. And I know there's some anxiety out there with some of the community members with the renovation versus the relocation of the elementary school. Once we get by that, I think we all need to roll up our sleeves again, and Mineral Point will be a great place to raise a family. Mineral Point Schools will be a great school to teach all the kids, and I'm proud to be part of it. And I thank you, Andy, for participating.
Thank you as well.
Thank you both, and thank you guys for coming, and thanks to everybody who's going to watch this. So, all right, have a great night.